And before we get started, I'm gonna ask Mr. Burson if he would to lead us in prayer.
By our head, Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray, God, that you would just continue to bless us all, God, one by one, name by name. We pray, Father, that you continue to look upon this nation, look upon this county, this city, and look upon the inhabitants, oh God. And Father, we thank and praise you for your son, Jesus Christ, for dying for our sins. And we pray, God, that you would give us the right decision to make on this meeting on today. Give us the right thoughts to have and make the right decision because they will impact and affect the citizens of Ware County. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pray to the heavens, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. I'll do a roll call. We need to do a roll call.
Yeah.
Mr. Burson?
President.
Mr. Tindall? Mr. Lucas? Mr. Cox? Chair's here. We do have a call. We can start.
You've got a physical form so you can go.
On our agenda items, this is a House Bill 581, the adjusted base year Advilorum Homestead exemption. The purpose of this public hearing is to educate the public and hear public comment regarding the Ware County Board of Commissioners intent to opt out the statewide adjusted base year Advilorum Homestead exemption for Ware County. And, uh... Is Roger here?
He's not. He's... I just texted him. He said he's on his way back from Macon. I think he had a meeting with some of the...
So he's not gonna be here?
Representatives today in Macon.
Is Billy here?
Not sure.
Okay.
We would have the option if we needed to.
Okay. Is anybody in support of this thing? The ones that... We hear anything on that? In support of the opting out?
It's a little hard to hear.
You can't hear? Okay. Is anybody here that support the thing?
Do you do the opt-in?
Okay. Now, do we have anybody that opposes it?
Opposes of opting out.
Of opting out?
Now, what does opting out mean? So we all know.
Ask her. Who's gonna explain that now?
I'll try to explain it.
Can you explain it?
I'll do my best. I'll buy that.
Okay.
So, House Bill 581 is amendment that the taxpayers voted on to approve. And basically what that House bill does is it puts a cap on how much your values can go up each time. However, in our case in Ware County, it's not as good as what we have in place because we have freezes. And we have those freezes are done by the school board, city commission, or city and the county. So, is, you know, your tax values are locked in, basically, in your house, if you have those exemptions. And so what you have to do, if you do not, by that vote, you're automatically in 581. So, to opt out of that, then we have to, um, have three public hearings. This is the third one. Then we'll have to have a regular meeting to vote on it to physically opt out. Because if we don't, then we're already in. Now, if we stay in, what that entails for us, because you still get your... You still get to choose. You get the best homestead exemption we have, which is the freeze. But what that entails with the commission and the Board of Assessors is they'll have to keep up with those columns. Even though they're not being used, you still have to keep up with those for records. And, um, and it's the new columns that will have to be created by this bill. And, uh, which could entail, uh, require you to hire more staff to keep up with those. So it could actually cost you some money. So now, is House Bill 581 good for some counties? It is. We're fortunate in Ware County that we have three freezes, a Board of Education, a city, and a county. A lot of counties don't have that. A lot of counties, cities don't have homesteads, or Board of Education don't have homesteads. But in our case, it's better for us as we opt out, is our opinion, or staff's opinion, that we opt out and stay with what we have. If we opt out, we're still eligible for any tax breaks that you can get, uh, which is called a FLOST, Floating Local Option Sales Tax. And the purpose of that tax would be a one-cent sales tax that the citizens in Ware County only would have to vote on. Ware County and city would have to vote on. There would be a city-county agreement on the split. And the purpose of that tax is to lower the tax rate, which is done by your millage rate. So then I can't... I don't know exactly what the millage rate is for the county, or how much it... The lost, which is the local option sales tax, how much it lowers, um, your millage rate. But I want to say it's around four mills, a little more than four mills.
Yes, about eleven, the county's millage rate, I believe, as well.
But what the lost lowers it down, or lowers it by four mills.
Four mills.
And then, so this FLOST essentially would lower it, kind of like the same thing. Um, and it's kind of based on revenue. So that's just kind of it in a nutshell, very general. I wish Roger was here. He knows more details about the actual bill. He's been presenting it every night or every public hearing. But that's kind of how it is, how it works, and just kind of a very general description of what it does.
Okay. So I didn't pretty much like, didn't like the idea of it, so I wanted to make sure.
This one. Thank you.
All right. Is there any more questions? You got some? Would y'all come up to the podium, please?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
And for, I'm sorry, for the record, ma'am, can I get you to state your name and address?
Lorena, O-R-E-N-A.
Last name?
C-U-E-L-I.
And your address?
Um, sixty-four, thirty-one, Bold One Twenty-two.
Okay. And ma'am, can I get you to state your name and address?
Severnham, Nefferson, Six Forty-three, Old Street.
Just so we have it for a minute.
Six Forty-three, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to piggyback on what the manager said there, and I think he explained it pretty well there. And to your question, Ms. Nelson, it doesn't make the taxes go up. If we opt out, everything stays just like it is right now, okay? Whenever, if we put a FLOST referendum on the ballot, which is a floating local option sales type, that tax will be dedicated and earmarked to go to, in a pot, basically, to offset the millage rate. Other words, to reduce the millage rate down on all properties, rental, your home, and everywhere. So that's what, that was the purpose of that. But what I was concerned about was that if we opted out, would we be able to put a referendum on the ballot? It would be ultimately left up to the citizens of Ware County, Waycross, to vote it in or vote it out. But if it were voted in, and so that was my apprehension as far as, not, maybe that's not a good choice word, not apprehension, but that was my concern, if we opt out, would we be able to still, and we've been pretty much assured and got stuff, you know, from the Tax Commissioner in reference to that, that we would still be eligible to offer a FLOST tax, you know, put it on a referendum. So, uh, it's kind of confusing, but the more I keep reading about it, I've gone to different couple of classes about it, uh, gotten material that I've run off, and anything I find pertinent to that 581. And based on the meetings I've gone to, everyone said that we are in the best position. And it's not but thirty counties, I think, in Georgia that have what we have. And the bill was really kind of designed for counties and cities that don't have it. And I think he alluded to that earlier about, you know, if they don't have the homestead exemptions. And so, um, I think right now, our best bet is to go on, opt out of it. Then if we decide to put on a referendum, we can, but if not, everything just keeps rolling like it's going.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Okay.
Well, I was new here when all this kind of came on, but I've really done a lot of research on it. And, uh, a lot of phone calls and a lot of pulling up on the internet and all. But the one we got is just so much better than the other one would be that, and I'm kind of hard to satisfy, but I finally got satisfied on it. So I just feel like the one we got so much better that we'd be better off to opt out, so.
Okay.
Another thing too, Mr. Chairman, if we opted in, what it would do, and I think the manager alluded to it earlier, it would create another whole set of books, for lack of a better term, to keep up with. And if you got, creating these different sets of books and, uh, other millage rates, not millage rate, but tax base that you got to try to keep track of, then you got to have employees to do that. So that's why I'm saying right now, it seemed like best on everything I've gotten, the best thing to do is opt out. And I think one thing you can't always, you can't opt back in if you see that it's not working. Or they say, well, they come up with something and say, well, you can't put on a FLOST tax, you know, if you opted out, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's one of the things I worried about too, was that if you opt out, can you still do that? We're not sure that. It's not in, it's not in that 581, but...
Yeah, basically, what Roger, he brought us something back from ACCG where they basically said, hey, if you opt out, you will still be able to, you meet the qualifications to put on a referendum if you so desire. And, uh, so that's what we are right now.
We don't know what legislature to do.
Yeah. But my understanding is that if they change that, if they come and say, well, no, you can't opt, I mean, you can't put on a FLOST, then you got to go back through a whole set of law with the legislation there. They got to undo what they've already done.
Yeah. A tax thing is a, uh, I think it's what's constitutional amendment. So they'll have to go back and, um, go back through the legislation to amend that bill, is what I understand.
Yeah. And I think I can pretty much voice the sentiment of everyone in this room. Nobody likes to keep paying more taxes. You want to get a reduction in your taxes if you can.
And let me clear up, when I say go back through the legislation to amend it, the voters have to vote on it to amend it, not just legislation. It has to go on a referendum because it's a constitutional amendment, I believe, to change it.
Anybody else got anything?
Actually, I got a question also. If we didn't opt out, um, which is going to lock, in other words, it would lock everything in as far as what our dollar value is at this point. That creates another problem, because then y'all are going to end up having to come up with eventually some other way to get the tax revenue to keep running.
Keep running.
Because you would, if it was all locked in, everything keeps going up, but your dollar amount you're collecting would not. Unless it's hitting the commercial end high.
I'll answer as best I can on that. First, Zen, can you state your full name and address for the record?
Zen Yawer, and it's fifty-nine, seventy-eight, Quick Draw Road in Millwood.
So, um, the answer to that question is, we've had a freeze for many years. Uh, I think the earliest freeze was in, in '08, I think. The second was '08. So '02, '08, and we've had a freeze. But, you know, those freezes only apply to the house that you live in, your main dwelling. So fortunately for the counties and the city, is development around and the values has increased that the city and the county has been fortunate enough every year to, um, lower the millage rate even with those freezes in place. To lower the taxes so that we don't have what you call a tax increase. Because if you, you don't have to increase your millage rates to have a tax increase. If the values are high enough, or if the values of your homes are up when they set their budget, and with the same millage rate of the previous year, and that causes an increase in taxes, then the commissions have to either have public hearings to advertise the tax increase, or they decide to drop the millage rate back. And so we've been fortunate in Ware and Waycross that the city, county, and I believe Board of Education has dropped their millage rate back. So we've been dropping ours back, well, um, I know the county's dropped it back in the last, at least, last three years, two, three years, anyway. We've been dropping our millage rate back because of the new development and the non-homesteaded properties.
Right. And I understood that. In other words, it's, we've been fortunate for the past few years because there's a lot of building and all going on. But if that was to stop, eventually, if it stayed the way they just passed it, then taxes would have to go up eventually somewhere else if you don't have all the new construction or big sales.
Right. And that would be in any case.
Right.
You would have to, if you had a freezes or not, um, your taxes would have to go up if you, if, at some point. And how you would do that would be millage rate. And that's how the taxes would go up, be through the millage rate. So, but the idea behind what we have now and being eligible for FLOST is to put it before the voters, um, if, you know, to put it before the voters to decide if they want to add one-cent sales tax to lower the, uh, the millage, just like you lowered, lowered it for the lost.
I would, like I say, I was just curious, in other words, so.
So the first thing would be to put a freeze on all of your rental houses?
No, no. Your homestead exemption only applies to your house that you live in, your primary dwelling. Even if you have, even if this is in place, the 581, it still only applies to your, your house you live in. How this helps, if you have rental, is by passing that FLOST and lowering the, lowering the millage rate. That's how that helps everybody.
I think that's a, you know, good question he asked, because like you were saying, if you, everything is like it is right now, and you didn't have an influx of money coming in, then you would have to do that, like I say, go up on the millage rate. But we've been blessed in this community with, uh, I guess, with the sales tax, the lost tax, all this. So all that helps the whole thing out, you know.
Is there any more? Yeah, come on, love. Give it to me.
Michael Burrow, twenty-five hours here in town. Based on everything I've heard so far and read, it seems like it might be a better deal to stick with what we have, uh, that's in place right now. And the reason being is, we don't know what it's going to be like in ten years.
if you opt out, can you still do that? We're not sure that it's not in, it's not in that 581, but.
Yeah, basically, what Roger, he brought us something back from ACCG where they basically said, hey, if you opt out, you will still be able to, you meet the qualifications to put on a referendum if you so desire. And so that's, that's what we are right now.
We don't know what legislature to do.
Yeah. But my understanding is if they, if they change that, if they come and say, well, no, you can't opt, I mean, you can't put on a FLOST, then you got to go back through a whole set of law with the legislation there. They got to undo what they've already done.
Yeah, a tax thing is a, uh, I think it's what's constitutional amendment. So they'll have to go back and, um, go back through the legislation to amend that bill is what I understand.
And I think I can pretty much voice the sentiment of everyone in this room. Nobody likes to keep paying more taxes.
Which.
You want to get a reduction in your taxes if you can.
And let me clear up, when I say go back to the legislation to amend it, the voters have to vote on it to amend it, not just legislation, has to go on referendum because it's a constitutional amendment, I believe, to change it.
Anybody else got anything?
Actually, I got a question also. If, if we didn't opt out, um, which is going to lock, in other words, it would lock everything in as far as what our dollar value is at this point. That creates another problem because then y'all going to end up having to come up with eventually some other way to get the tax revenue to keep running.
Keep running.
Because you would, if it was all locked in, everything keeps going up, but, but your dollar amount you're collecting would not. Unless it's in the commercial realm high.
I'll, I'll answer the best I can on that. Um, first Zen, can you state your full name and address for the, for the record?
Zen Yawer, and it's fifty-nine seventy-eight Quick Draw Road in Millwood.
So, um, the answer to that question is we've had a freeze for many years. Uh, I think the earliest freeze was in, in oh eight, I think. The second was oh eight. So oh two, oh eight, and we've had a freeze. Um, but you know, those freezes only apply to the house that you live in, your main dwelling. So fortunately for the counties and the city is development around and the values has, has, has increased that the city and the county has been fortunate enough every year to, um, lower the millage rate even with those freezes in place. To, to lower the taxes so that we don't have what you call a tax increase. Um, because if you, you don't have to, to increase your millage rates to have a tax increase. If the values are high enough, or if the values of your homes are up when they set their budget and with the same millage rate of the previous year, um, and that causes an increase in taxes, then the commissions have to either have public hearings to advertise the tax increase or they decide to drop the millage rate back. And so we've been fortunate in Ware and Waycross that the, uh, city county, and I believe Board of Education has dropped their millage rate back. So we've been dropping ours back, well, um, I know the county's dropped it back in the last, at least last three years, two, three years anyway. We've been dropping our millage rate back because of the new development and the, the, uh, non-homesteaded properties.
Right, and I understood that, in other words, it's, we've been fortunate for the past few years because there's a lot of building and all going on. But if that was to stop, eventually if it stayed the way they just passed it, then taxes would have to go up eventually somewhere else if you don't have all the new construction or big sales.
Right, and that would be in any case.
Right.
You would have to, if you had a freezes or not, um, your taxes would have to go up if you, if, at some point, and how you would do that would be millage rate. Um, and that's how the taxes would go up, be through the millage rate, so. But the idea behind what we have now and being eligible for FLOST is to put it before the voters. Um, if, you know, to put it before the voters to decide if they want to add one cent sales tax to lower the, the, uh, the millage, um, just like you lowered, lowered for the lost.
I would like to say, I was just curious, in other words, so.
So the question would be, if you freeze the home state rental houses?
No, no, um, your homestead exemption only applies to your house that you live in, your primary dwelling. Even if you have, even if this is in place, the 581, it still only applies to your, your, your house you live in. Um, how this helps if you have rental is by, by passing that FLOST and lowering the, lowering the millage rate. That's how that helps.
Right.
Everybody.
I think that's a, you know, good question he asked because like you were saying, if you, everything is like it is right now and you didn't have an influx of money coming in, then you would have to do that, like I say, go up on the millage rate. But we've been blessed in this community with, uh, I guess with the sales tax, the loss tax, all this. So all that helps the whole thing out, you know.
Okay. Any more? Yeah, come on, Lou. Give it your name.
Michael Burrow with Twenty Four Alice here in town. Based on everything I've heard so far and read, it seems like it might be a better deal to stick with what we have, uh, that's in place right now. And the reason being is we don't know what it's going to be like in ten years anyway. And the main thing that's impressing me about this now is the fact that we can opt out now, but we have a choice to go back into it later. So I don't see where we're going to get hurt by voting to opt out. Uh, and then we can keep the door open as far as looking at it right when economic circumstances change.
So, Mr. Chairman, could, I just made a comment to that. Whether we opt out or whether we opt in, our freeze will supersede any freeze that the state has. So, so the only thing that opting or staying in this, this 581 is going to do for us, what it's going to do for us is it's going to increase the workload on our, um, our tax appraisers office, the appraisers office. It's just going to increase their workload because even with the 581, how it would be for everybody else that doesn't have a freeze in is that it's going to set it up where you have a freeze on your taxable value, but then it goes up by the CPI every year.
Right.
Our freeze will supersede that. So your taxable value will never increase even if your assessed value increases. Um, and so it's, it's really no benefit whatsoever for us to stay in it. It's actually going to hurt us in the long run because we'll probably have, if we had to hire two new people to, to do the extra workload in the appraisers office, we would have, you know, two new people plus training, plus computers, plus desks. We'd probably be a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars in in the first twelve, twelve to eighteen months. So we'd have to increase our budget in that office just like that, just to handle the workload. So that's what it's going to do by us staying in. Us stay, if us opting out changes nothing.
Everything changes.
Well, I saw, I saw a variation of the CPI adjustment down in California when I lived there. They had a two percent max every year for property assessments to go up, which weren't fine because real estate was crazy in California. Uh, and then it went up to the market rate when the property got sold. So you could have a person paying a very low rate on one house and next door it became a very high rate based on their assessment. And I just don't see that here for a while. So like I say, given that, the fact that, uh, we already have a better deal than other counties anyway, I'd say you look to opt out. That's all, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Clark, did you, uh, Commissioner Tindall, he come, come in? You got him, okay. Okay, anybody else? Yeah, would you come up, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Karen McDaniel, and I live at thirty-seven fifty Acoe Lane, Waycross, Georgia. Um, I came as a concerned citizen this afternoon because I didn't understand this. And from what I've heard so far, I think I'm in agreement with, with y'all about opting out. And I wanted to make that vocal, okay?
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? We need all the support we get to make our minds up, but we're going to vote on it here in a little bit. We need y'all's support. Any more from the commissioners? Tim is coming in. He was at the doctor's office.
Mr. Chairman.
Pick him up too.
Um, so I, I just wanted to say, so, um, I, I'll just go ahead and let, let everybody know that, um, as far as where I get my information from, what have you, as far as throughout the county is going to be through the news outlet or through the, um, through the office here at the county office and through, uh, phone calls from concerned citizens that are in my district or even anywhere else in the county. Uh, I, I do not get my information, uh, from, from Facebook or any other type of social media. So I don't get into Facebook debates about, um, about any of this information. I'm, I, the only reason I have, have one that's activated right now was just because of the election a couple of months back. So I, I, I rarely check it unless somebody's actually sent me a message that they want to ask me a question, and that's fine. Uh, but I did get a call today, um, from, from someone here in Ware County that, uh, stated that there was some chatter back and forth between some folks on Facebook saying that, you know, that it was the, that the county up here, the commissioners are just trying to, uh, rake in some more money tax wise and things like that. And so I just wanted to just kind of let it be known. And, uh, our tax commissioner, Collins, Roger Collins, he confirmed it in the last two meetings that saying that this isn't a way that we're going to be raking in any more money tax wise. Uh, this is going to actually stay the same, nothing's going to change as far as that goes. Only way we're going to pull in any more funds is if we raise the millage rate. Uh, and hopefully we won't ever have to do that, you know? I'd like to be able to keep on lowering it. If we pass the FLOST with, you know, which I'm assuming that if, you know, if and when we vote to opt out of this, that we're going to take that option and put the FLOST on the table for the, for the voters to do. And then at that point, uh, according to the numbers, that if we had this FLOST in place in twenty twenty-four, our millage rate would be down around six point two, six point three, uh, down from eleven, uh, where it's at right now, eleven and some change. And so it's actually going to give us a benefit and an opportunity for us to actually lower our taxes that we're going to be paying out the door. And everybody that comes into town, everybody that visits Waycross, everybody that buys anything in Waycross, with the exception of a few grocery items, is going to be helping us pay our property taxes. So, uh, so, so I, I think it's going to be a huge benefit for us to do that. But I just wanted to, you know, clarify that if people are watching, streaming or, or what have you that have questions about that, that, um, you know, just trying to put those kind of things to rest.
Thank you, Commissioner Tindall, I'm glad you explained that, I did, did a good job with it. Anybody else?
Are we talking about House Bill?
House Bill, five eighty-one.
Yes, for you, Mr. Chair, I've got a little bit to talk about on that.
You got something?
Yes, sir. I've, I've received several phone calls and several emails. I was actually trying to pull up an email that I was sent from somebody that actually lives over in our area. And it was in reference to House Bill five eighty-one and also in reference to, you know, what they just voted no on, but I had to recuse myself, and that was multi-dwellings going up over in, off of the Wacona area, uh, frontier states area and that kind of stuff. So I had to recuse myself because I live in that area. And it's not fair for me to vote, you know, any of us to vote under those circumstances. So I recuse myself from the conversation and the vote. Uh, but when it comes to House Bill five eighty-one, Mr. Collins, tax commissioner, he's in his third term now, he knows what he's doing. I don't know nothing about the taxes, that's why we rely on him, he's the expert. He's the one that gets up there with the senators and the House of Representatives and that kind of stuff. And he has been told by the Department of Revenue, he's been told by numerous representatives, many senators, that if we, we, we got the best thing going right now in Ware County. We have a triple freeze. That means your Ware County taxes on homestead are frozen, your city taxes are frozen, and your school taxes are frozen. Okay? So like if you sell your home in now and you go buy a new home, what those taxes are when you get there, you file for homestead, you get that homestead exemption, and your taxes never increase. If we open up this other worm, and also what Roger checked on was what was that, that we, we thought we were going to lose from the state of Georgia?
The FLOST.
The FLOST.
FLOST.
Uh, he checked with that, and we're not going to lose the opportunity to get it. Of course, that goes to y'all, the voters. Y'all tell us what y'all want. But the more money that comes in from the FLOST, the less y'all pay in income tax, uh, excuse me, in property tax, even on, like if you have rental property. You understand what I'm saying? And these are some of the emails and, and phone calls I got because people just didn't understand what was going on with it. And they thought if we opted out of this, y'all's taxes are going to jump up.
Yeah.
We got the best thing going. We got a triple freeze. And, uh, Ms. County Clerk, I think Roger said there was what, eighteen, twenty-one counties out of a hundred and fifty-seven that have?
Thirty.
Thirty? Out of a hundred and fifty-seven have the freezes on homestead like we do. And if I thought, if I remember Roger correctly, he said we were the only one that have the triple three. We're the only county in the state of Georgia that has freeze on the county taxes, freeze on the city taxes, isn't that what he said? And freeze on the education taxes. We're the only county. And he has talked in depth with the Department of Revenue, in depth with senators. There's a House of Representatives up in Cherokee, Georgia right now trying to mandate that all counties adopt this. Now, if we adopt this, there's a possibility that our taxes will go up. That's why we don't want, that's the reason we're trying to stay away from it. We're neutral in the process of, you know, we're not going to talk negative about it. But as far as me and as far as what I heard about from Commissioner Tindall and other commissioners that I've spoken with, we're voting no on this thing because we currently have the best thing for y'all. And it's the best for us because we pay, when we become commissioners, we don't get a tax recard, we still pay taxes. So we're watching out for what y'all to get, we're also watching out for us. And we're also watching out for the next generations to come. Okay? So we're, we're not getting nothing extra, and we don't get a tax recard when we become a commissioner. So there's been a lot of thought in this, we've been dealing with this for about eight weeks now. And Roger was here the first two, uh, he couldn't be here today. I'm sorry, I was late, I was at the doctor's office. But if y'all, y'all voted for us, which tells me that y'all trust us to a certain point, and you believe in us to make the right decision, and the right decision, in several of our opinions, is to vote no for this. Because we got the best thing going already.
All right.
Chairman.
Appreciate that, Tim.
Just one last thing, I want to just commend the people that came up to this public hearing. And that's, this is why, even with this bill, they say if you opt out, it's mandated we have free public hearing so that we can try to tell the people and educate them and educate ourselves too as to what's going on. Because I tell you, sometime when they implement these laws or when they get these laws, it just about take a rocket science, try to figure out what's, what it's really saying. So you got to kind of dig through all the minutia and get it, and put it in layman's terms so that we are know exactly what we're talking about. So I want to commend everyone for coming and, uh, for my fellow commissioners, we're trying to explain it as best we know. And this is why we try to get all the information we can, uh, as you say, reap the information and glean the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Any more commission?
Anybody got any questions for any of us? You're welcome, welcome to ask.
Any more, any more questions from the audience that y'all would like to ask? Anything y'all would like to find out about?
Y'all ain't going to make us mad, just come up and ask us if y'all got anything.
Because this is the last hearing we're going to get to have on.
Y'all want to come holler at me, come holler at me. We have, okay, good deal.
All right. Manager, y'all, clerk, y'all got anything to add to it or to, anybody got anything else?
Looking, just if they keep in mind it's homestead exemption, like you said, primary residence, and I think it's tied to a limited number of acres.
Five acres. Primary residence and five acres.
Five acres.
So any, anything other than the primary residence and five acres? So if you've got it, like, like at my house, I've got my primary residence, five acres, but I've got a barn on it. So if I do get my assessment or my taxable value increases, it'll be based on any improvements other than my residence that I, that I have. So if I, you know, increase the size of my barn or if I do some extra stuff that increases the value at that point, then I'm going to see an increase on my, uh, on my taxable value. Uh, but other than that, if it stayed the same for the next twenty years and I didn't do anything, then it would be the same for the next twenty years.
Sure.
Can we choose our house in the five acre you want you to choose? Like my house and the other acres that have the other buildings on them?
I wish we could do it that way.
I've got another question.
Okay.
You get, you've got a house and you got another house building on the same piece of property. Which, which house causes it to go up?
The one you don't live in.
The one that's not your primary residence.
The one you don't live in will go up.
Okay, I guess I'm kind of confused with that though, because if you rent it out after six months, don't that second house become the primary residence also for that person?
No.
They don't own it.
That's right.
So, so what it goes by, it goes by whose name is on the deed. And so the, the name on the deed, and it would be their, that, that person's primary residence. So if I own a, I've got another piece, another house on that's connected to my property that I own that's, that's at the corner of my property, that's not considered part of my homestead, even though it is, ain't other residence, my son lives in it and, but I have to pay regular taxes on it and it's subject to increase, things like, because I do not have homestead. I, I can't claim homestead exemption on that piece of property.
Okay. Now, because it can get kind of confused, confused in other words, when you think about it, because.
Right. So if you own the, if you, if your name is on the property and you have a primary residence and then right next to it, another lot of land that you own, that you're renting, that's not considered your primary residence. Now, the renter does not pay the property taxes.
Right.
You pay the property taxes, and so that, that property is not considered.
Paying the property taxes.
Right. So that's not considered part of homestead. Now, if you sold it to somebody, then they could file for homestead and then they would get whatever the value is at that point, either a fair market or the assessed value, then they would take the forty percent and that would be your taxable value.
Easiest way to remember it without getting confused on it is the one you lay your head in.
That's the one, that's the one that could cause whatever to go up.
No, no, where you, where you lay your head will never go up.
It's true.
Right, but the other one can.
Yes, sir.
You only get, you only get one shot.
You only get one homestead.
We have one, one homestead, you can own ten houses, but you're going to only get homestead on one.
Yep.
And he knows because he owns about a hundred and twenty. Hundred twenty-five?
Just like cash gets run to the customer.
That's right.
One per customer.
Okay, is anybody else?
Everybody got it, you understand? We're do, we're doing this for y'all, I promise you. Because we're, uh, we're, we're going to benefit from it too, yes, as taxpayers, we're going to benefit from it, but we're not going to benefit anything else. Because we're going to benefit, just watch y'all benefit. And we're trying to do the best interest of y'all and the future generations, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Got another hand, okay, would you come up, or go ahead?
Okay, I was going to ask, um, if FLOST was broken in and we accepted it, would, um, would it reduce millage rate on commercial property or it would just be homestead, whatever?
Everything.
Everything, yeah. If we get the one cent, it'll, it'll lower tax on everything, commercial, rental.
The millage rate across the board for the whole county, for any properties at that point. And that's where everybody would benefit, like if you own rental property, if you own extra acreage that's over that five acres, that's where everybody else, even commercial properties, these industrial properties, they would benefit from it. So that would increase the potential for new businesses to come in, new industries to come in, because then our millage rate would drop down. You know, if our neighboring counties' millage rates are around nine, ten, eleven, twelve, whatever they may be, but then our drops down to six, well, that's half, you know? And so therefore, our, our, our place would be a lower tax rate under property taxes.
Yeah, that's right.
So, yes, having the FLOST in place is going to be beneficial and, and really, in my opinion, it would be, uh, absolutely needed.
Yep. That's a good question.
Good question, and I think I got a good answer.
And I can, I can tell y'all something else too, give you a little bit of insight, if it's, if this isn't okay to say, please advise me. But, uh, education, their millage was like sixteen point four, something another, something another, and they dropped down to fourteen. Well, state law says they cannot, at this time, says they cannot drop below fourteen because if they do, they lose several million in state funding.
Twelve million.
Twelve million dollars in state funding if they go under fourteen. Well, we have Mr. James Burchett and, uh, Mr., the senator?
John Corbett.
John Corbett.
John Corbett and, uh.
And the senator.
Russ Goodman.
Russ Goodman. They're trying to pass, they're trying to get a bill wrote up now to pass through the House and then the Senate to where the school could actually drop theirs down. to where the school could actually drop theirs down to 10. Theoretically, the school board could have dropped their millage down to 10 this year, because they had that much savings. But according to state law, if they would have, that'd have lost that 12 million dollars, a million dollars a month, and they can't afford that. And we couldn't afford to subsidize that if they broke the state law, and then it would put them at risk further. But we do have politicians that have come up here and talked to us, we've had private meetings with them, we've had public meetings with them. They are trying to drop, trying to draw up a bill to get the school to where they can drop down to 10. Imagine if the school millage dropped to 10 and ours never left the sixes, imagine that. You'd probably be paying $600, $700 cheaper than you're paying now, some people wouldn't even have to pay taxes. Does that make sense? Did I confuse it? Could I have said it any better?
That was good.
That's good. All right. Thank y'all.
That's good.
Not trying to confuse you, just trying to give y'all a little bit of food for thought. Because we do have some good, got some good people at the state, well, local level and then the state level, trying to help everybody in Ware County. And that's, you know, James Burchett, Russ Goodman, Mr. Corbett. I mean, they're really trying to help us, because they love Ware County, just like we do.
All right, anymore?
No, sir.
If not, this is the last call around there, I'm facing the, ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. But we'll go for, before we leave, let's see, 10 minutes and then put it together, okay, 10 minutes and we'll come back for a, for a call meeting in 10 minutes. And then we'll vote on it. Thank you.
How are you doing?